All right, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight is Thursday, May 14, 2020. It's 6:00 PM and tonight's the regular meeting of the Youngsville Mayor and City Council. In accordance with Governor John Bell Edwards Executive Proclamation, please be notified that the Youngsville City Council members will attend and participate in this meeting by remote access. Due to COVID-19, the city would otherwise be unable to operate due to form requirements. I'll go ahead and make the first announcement that public comment for this meeting can be received prior to any council action by dialing 346. 248-7799 and entering meeting ID 844-0296-0474. Again, that's telephone number 346-248-7799. And entering meeting ID 844-0296-0474 during the meeting. All right, for our opening this evening, I'd like to welcome our pastor, Andy Tribe from Youngsville Community Church. He'll be leading us in the invocation today. And that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Lindy Bolgiano. Pastor, thank you for being here, sir. And let me make sure you're unmuted.
All right.
You got it.
Pastor, go right ahead, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight, God, to honor you with everything that we offer. I pray for our mayor. Ken Ritter, Father, the decisions that he has to make, God, can't be easy. Our police chief, our fire chief, and others that are in authority, God. Pray that we as citizens honor you and honor them in the decisions they make, Father. Thank you for everyone who's at this meeting tonight, Father, and we just continue to pray for this COVID-19 to just go away, Father, so we can resume some sense of normalcy again, God. We love you and we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Councilman Bolgiano, let's make sure you're unmuted. You're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome again. Tonight is the regular City Council meeting of the Youngsville Mayor and City Council, Thursday, May 14, 2020. Council, before we begin, I'd like to, if you'd allow me, to please share a proclamation that I'd like to share related to Southside High School. Joining us in the meeting this evening are two special guests. We have Principal Catherine Cassidy of Southside High School. And we also have Senior Red Peliquin. So, welcome to both of you. Thank you for joining us here this evening in the meeting. The council, go ahead and read the proclamation and Red and Ms. Cassidy will go ahead and send this to you and give you a copy of it. The proclamation states, whereas Southside High School opened in Youngsville, Louisiana in 2017, and its first senior class is graduating this year and will always be memorable for multiple reasons. And whereas this class was born shortly after the tragic events of 9/11, it entered high school the same year as our community suffered a significant flood in August 2016. Whereas members of this senior class started as freshmen at another high school, but found a home at Southside for their sophomore, junior, and senior years. Whereas this graduating class has provided long-lasting contributions to Southside High, including selecting the school's mascot, colors, and writing Southside's fight song. And whereas due to COVID-19's pandemic, the class of 2020 will not experience a traditional prom, class pick, barbecue, senior trip, cap and gown distribution, May graduation, and other senior traditions. Whereas despite the adversity and historic experience as seniors, multiple athletic teams have qualified for the playoffs and state competitions in their first years of playing for district honors. And whereas the class of 2020 has 33 valedictorians, including six with straight A's. Now therefore, I, Ken Ritter, Mayor of the City of Youngsville, Louisiana, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 as Southside High School's senior class of 2020 month in the City of Youngsville and hereby call upon all Youngsville citizens to congratulate Southside High's graduating class of 2020 and wish them well in their future endeavors and encourage them to continue their service to our city and our society. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Youngsville to be affixed this 14th day of May 2020. So this, ladies and gentlemen, is probably insignificant to a lot of you in the big picture. But in talking to our council members, they shared with this and they reminded me that we should take the time to acknowledge this senior class for all their contributions. All of us in Lafayette Parish fought so hard to have this high school in our community to serve as South Lafayette. And when we look back and realize the historic nature of not only having the first graduating class at Southside High, but also the other things that happened earlier today, I was just, you know, Googling, when did YouTube come out? And I estimate that some of our, this class might have been three years old when YouTube first started. So we welcome you and welcome you as graduates, congratulate you. And I want to share with Ms. Cassidy, Chief Boudreaux, and the members of our City Council, want to give you guys an honor of having a parade in Youngsville. And I'm unmuting Ms. Cassidy and Red. So Ms. Cassidy, you want to, you want to maybe share more with, with your class, what we're thinking about?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the proclamation. And I would just like to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor Ken Ritter, and all the councilmen in the community that have supported the birth of Southside and continuing to grow in this community. You know, again, I always say it's a beautiful school in the exterior, but the community really makes this school something special in the student community inside the building. So thank you and thank you, councilmen, for always supporting us. And Chief, always taking care of business with us, helping us out, you know, couldn't have been done without such a fabulous invested City Council and police force. So thank you. Um, yeah, so, you know, talked with Mayor Ken Ritter and we are so happy to be able to announce today that on May 23 at 7:00 PM, the original graduation day and the original graduation time, we're partnering together to have a graduation parade. And details are going to follow, you know, what that's going to look like. It'll be a vehicle parade. We have a lot of great things in store and we'll iron out details and then we'll get that to you guys. But we're just really happy, you know, some of our kids are entering, they're enlisting in the military. So they're not going to even be around for July graduation day, the alternate one. So this is a great opportunity to be all-inclusive, to make sure that all of the families, since right now the current standard is that that the kid can only have four guests, that now they can, all the community can be involved, Grandma, Grandpa, on both sides, everybody can come and celebrate along the parade route. So, you know, we're really happy to be able to have this opportunity and get the community and all family members of all, the kids, the kids deserve it.
Well, thank, thank you, Ms. Cassidy. And I know, I'm sure a couple of our council members have a few things to say, but I'd like to invite Red Peliquin, if you'd like to say a few words on behalf of his senior class at this time.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, first of all, thank you so much for this opportunity. I mean, it's been a crazy ride from beginning to end with our high school experience. I mean, from being transferred from Como to Southside. That whole thing by itself is one thing. But I mean, our faculty and staff and teachers, everything about Southside has been to provide us with the high school experience we deserve. And I mean, they have truly fought so hard to do that for us, even in this strange time. I mean, they've done everything they can to make it feel normal. So I mean, I just want to show my appreciation so much for our teachers and faculty for the effort that they give for us to allow us these things to happen. And I feel like our community is going to be very happy with this. I'm kind of getting emotional because, I mean, it's been crazy, man. And this, I really, I really appreciate the parade because it's going to, for one thing, we're not going to have our whole family at our graduation like we could have. So to be able to have our family there, our brothers, sister, aunt, uncle, whoever in our family to help celebrate with us, I mean, that's just a whole thing we didn't even expect coming. So that's just amazing. And the support that our community is going to show, I know it's already going to be insane. Youngsville's always showed the best support for our sports and everything about Southside High School in general. So, yeah, thank you very much.
It's, it's our, it's our pleasure and to all the graduating seniors of the class of Southside High School 2020, we're proud of all of you. And looking forward to the great contributions that you're going to have, not only on the City of Youngsville, but beyond. I'd open it up if any of the council members want to share anything at this time.
Uh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Catherine, I just wanted to, to give kudos to you and your staff for doing such a phenomenal job as recognizing these students in such a hard time. You know, it seems like high school for me was just yesterday, rally was 10 years ago. And, uh, you know, I can't imagine having to go through this exact experience myself. Missing out on one event, plus all of them for such a big time. And Red, man, don't let, don't let today's crisis times dictate, you know, your future and what you have planned ahead of you. You know, use this time to, to take advantage of this and, and conquer the world with it, you know. It's, uh, while you may have missed some, some important events that would have sure been a lot of fun. You know, the class of 2020 of Southside will definitely be remembered forever as, you know, the first ever of Southside and creating what it is today. So you'll, you'll always have that to look back on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're a unique class in so many forms. So, I mean, why not go out with a bang and, you know, and end it with a unique graduation, you know? So this class really has been through a lot and so, um, some special extra.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Any, any other comments before we move on? The details will be forthcoming about the parade. So it sounds like it's going to be May 23 at 7:00 PM. Of course, it's going to be, going to have some strict guidelines that we'll have to follow under this, under this time. But I have a feeling that no matter what we do, we're going to rise to the occasion and we'll ensure that it's done safely for everyone involved, not just the graduating seniors in their class, but also the, the participants and the residents of Youngsville, Bruce are in the South Lafayette area. So, all right, well, thank you all so much. Red and Ms. Cassidy, y'all are more than welcome to stay for, uh, for, for the meeting, but certainly no hard feelings if you guys.
Thank you again, Mayor, and thank you again, Chief, for coordinating with us. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Cassidy. Thank you, Red. All right, well, moving on, the agenda item 2.1 is acceptance of the minutes.
Motion to accept.
Thank you. Nano, and then second by Councilman Stansberry. Any, any comments? Let's see, I believe I have the council all unmuted at this time. All right, hearing no, hearing no comments. Ms. Andrews, would you please call the roll? And she's unmuted.
Yeah. I just want to make sure Mr. Bolgiano did the motion.
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Mr. Bolgiano?
Yes.
Mr. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Andrews. Thank you, Council. The agenda item 3.1 is acceptance of the finance report of March 2020. I think I heard Councilman Williams and then second by Councilman Romero. Any, any comments or, all right, any comments related to the finance report of March 2020? All right, hearing none.
Mr. Bolgiano?
Yes.
Mr. Bolgiano? Mr. Amer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry? Mr. Williams?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Ab? Approved.
Yes.
Oh.
Preliminary plot. Okay. Sounds like it was affirmative. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to preliminary plots. Prior to this meeting at 4:00 PM, we had three public, preliminary hearing, or preliminary plat, public hearings, excuse me. So we'll go ahead and move with council action on those items. 4.1's preliminary plat approval for lots 48A, 49A, and 49B of Darfina Estates located in Section 31, T10S, R5E, belonging to John Foote. Any further council discussion on this item? Again, we had a public hearing at 4:00 PM related to this subject. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on this property. All right, Councilman Bolgiano. All right. Let's see, it's a motion by Bolgiano, second by Mr. Williams, to accept the preliminary plot and the letter of recommendation from Clint Semino, Director of Planning. Any other comments? All right, I had a motion and second, Ms. Andrews.
Mr. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Mr. Bolgiano?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews, and thank you, Council. 4.2, preliminary plat approval of Kane Haven subdivision, a single-family residential subdivision located in Section 20 and 21, T11S, R5E, the owner-developers Kane Haven LLC. Councilman Abshar?
Yes, I, Ms. Andrews, you want to read back the motion that we spoke about?
Sure. Motion to grant preliminary plat approval to Kane Haven subdivision, single-family residential subdivision located in Section 20 and 21, T-11-S, R5E, owner-developer Kane Haven LLC, as recommended by Director of Planning and Development Clint Semino in a letter dated May 6, 2020, with the following conditions. Fencing will be required along the back of each of the lots upon completion of construction of each home and prior to occupancy.
With that emotion, Mr. Abshar?
Yes.
Second. Second, Councilman Stansberry, thank you, sir. Any further comments or discussion from the City Council?
Hey, Mayor.
All right, again, on this item, we head up.
The name. Are you hearing me?
Yes. Yes, I am. You're, you're asking about lot one, the discussion item that ensued on lot. Yeah, any, I guess, council, it's up for council discussion. So it's whatever the pleasure of the council is.
Well, Mallory had mentioned, the engineer, she had mentioned about working with Clint. And if it couldn't be resolved, then basically at Clint's discretion, I would just like to add that to the motion if possible.
Yeah.
Clint, are you okay with that?
Okay.
Yes, that's fine.
I agree with that also.
Okay.
All right. All right. And so Councilman Stansberry, you're seconding with that addition. All right, any further, any further discussion?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Andrews.
Mr. Stansberry?
Yes.
Mr.? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Ms. Abshar?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bolgiano?
Yes.
And Mr. Amer?
Yes.
I think it's delayed. Unanimous.
Yes.
All right, thank, thank you. Council, 4.3 preliminary plat approval. Thank you, preliminary plat approval of Moncherie subdivision, a single-family residential subdivision located in Section 19, T11S, R5E developer Rusty Broussard.
I'll make a motion with Mayor's recommendation of altering the buffer zone and allowing for the six or eight-foot fence, whichever one we, the eight-foot fence, I think it was.
Yes, sir.
I'll motion.
Check.
I have a motion by Councilman Abshar and the second was by Councilman Williams. Accepting the letter of recommendation from Clint Semino, but waiving the requirement of the 50-foot buffer zone against Aries Marine on the, I guess it's the north and east property, to include an eight-foot fence on those property lines. All right, any other discussion? Andrews?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Mr. Bolgiano?
Yes.
Mr. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry?
Yes.
Approved.
All right, thank you, Ms. Andrews. Other business, number five, 5.1 is to award the bid for the Almanaster La Riviera sewer extension project. I believe it was Tuesday that we opened bids on this project. We were fortunate to receive six bids on that project. Councilman Romero, did you have a comment?
I'll move on. I'll move.
All right, thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Romero, and I didn't see a second.
Second.
All right, and second by Councilman Stansberry. Any further comments or discussion on this?
Can, all right, for, for the public benefit, this is. I don't have five, one in my packet, man.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Tuesday this week, we opened.
It was emailed to them, Mayor, it was not in the package because we opened the bids late. We just opened the.
All right, so I'll tell you what the scope of the project is. This is the sewer extension from the Southside High School's regional collection system to, it's extending that line to Chimametary and South La Riviera. It's going to benefit future development along Chimametary Parkway in that corridor near Southside High School. In addition to that, this is where Kane Haven that you just approved prior to this action item. That is where this development's going to tie into. So it's going to serve a development in that area and then it's also going to support future commercial development along Chimametary Parkway near the intersection of South La Riviera and Chimametary Parkway. Six bids, I don't, I don't remember the last time we actually had six bids on any project recently. And actually, the, the, it was great that this project actually came in below the engineers' opinion cost. All right, Ms. Andrews, any further comment on that relevant?
No, we were just excited to see the, to see so many bids. It looks like this is going to be the future for a while. So now's the time to bid, to bid out stuff.
All right, so we have a motion to award the low bidder and we had a second. Ms. Andrews, call the roll, please.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Mr. Bolgiano?
Yes.
Mr. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, I'll share again. There's been no, there's been no public that's entered the meeting for public comments, but I'll share. And if anyone in the public has commented on any item, that's up for council action to see. All in, the 346-248-7799 and enter meeting ID 844-0296-0474. So I'll repeat it one more time. This is going to be not only for, this is going to be for all items prior to council vote. Area code 346-248-7799 and entering meeting ID 844-0296-0474 during the meeting. All right, so we'll move ahead. Item 5.2 is to consider the request from John Romero with Acadiana, Acadia, excuse me, Development Group to annex the property located at the corner of Deacon and Savoy. Thomas Butcher Warren Butcher Estate is the current owner. Once on your packet, you have the, the petition from those property owners requesting annexation to the city limits of Youngsville. It's at the corner of Deacon and Savoy on the Verrod side, on the north side of Savoy. It's 26.039 acres and the intention is for residential development.
Motion to accept that annexation.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Abshar, the second was by Mr. Romero. Any other comments about the, about the proposed area of annexation into the city limits of Youngsville? All right, there's no public comment. Ms. Andrews?
Ms. Bolgiano?
Yeah.
Mr. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Approved.
I thank you, Ms. Andrews. Resolution 6.1, resolution 2020-10, a resolution of the City of Youngsville authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Louisiana Department of State, the Office of the Secretary of State, the Lafayette Parish Register of Voters, Lafayette Consolidated Government, the City of Bruce are, the City of Youngsville, for an additional early voting location in the Youngsville-Broussard area to be utilized for all local, state, and federal election. I'll provide a little bit of the context on this. This is to, as the, as the resolution states, this is to get another early voting location site in Lafayette Parish, particularly that would conserve the Youngsville-Broussard area. I believe there, there's Lafayette Parish, as the resolution states, has never had an early voting location site outside of the Register of Voters office. 64 parish register our voters offices across the state serve as early voting sites. But in addition to that, there's also 38 sites across the state of Louisiana that serve as early voting sites. East Baton Rouge Parish, I believe, has five, Orleans has four. And what we're doing here is, is working with our parish capital and parish councilman Carlson's on, is in the meeting here with us today. He's been very supportive of this initiative, but we also know the constraints of parish government's funding right now going into, going into this year, but particularly now, and they're heightened, heightened concern over the cost for additional expenditures. So in conversation with the mayor Bruce are, Councilman Carlson, the desire of our entire City Council and myself, what this resolution's doing is signaling to the, or letting the, letting the Lafayette Parish Council know that we will fund the early voting site for two years and the cost will be split evenly between the City of Broussard and the City of Youngsville. We believe that having an early voting site that could service our community would be beneficial for all of our. We believe that having an early voting site that could service our community would be beneficial for all of our residents and it warrants the expenditure. Our hope is that at the end of the two years or during this two-year period that the parish council can pick up the expense to to continue the to continue the early voting site. We believe it will be very popular. We also have a letter of support. Our state representative Bob O'Yay has been very helpful in this process as well, and he's issued a letter of support to Secretary of State Kyle Ardewan. Last Friday, a group of us met with the registrar or the Secretary of State's elections top officer here in here in Lafayette Parish and they vetted a site for us, vetted the site that we're proposing. And we're excited about the opportunity. So again, in summary, this would fund this would fund the site for two years jointly with the City of Broussard and direct or request rather that the Lafayette Parish Council enter into the memorandum of understanding with the State Secretary of State office to move forward with the early voting site in our area, knowing that we will reimburse the parish council for the cost. Before I before I open it to Councilman Carlson and whomever else would like to discuss it, Mayor Bork, I did invite to come to the meeting this evening. He had a zoning and planning meeting this evening that he had to attend, but he he gave me a statement that I'd like to share. He's proud that the City of Broussard, the City of Youngsville and Lafayette Parish are working in unity to help our parish as a whole. We've long needed an early voting site. And what is good for our parish is also good for the individual cities and our residents. This effort has my full support and the City of Broussard will be putting forward a similar similar resolution at our May twenty-sixth meeting. Councilman Carlson, any any thing you want to add to the topic? I appreciate your support of it and I appreciate you you leading the effort for us on the parish council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, I think you covered it very well. When we initially started having these conversations, really, everyone was on board with this. I don't think there was anyone that doesn't see the need for another early voting site on the south side of the parish to serve Broussard, Youngsville and the unincorporated areas of the parish. I left that meeting going to have a meeting with our CFO. And when I had that meeting with her, I knew that this is not something at this time that the parish council can fund. And so we started looking into alternatives and it was really Mayor Ritter and Mayor Bork and Broussard that said, of course, with council approval, they would like to, I think, make a generous offer, which is to fund this site for two years. My concern at the beginning, and I shared this, was that I don't want this to become a long-term crutch for the parish. This is something this is our responsibility to fund. Really out of the generosity of both cities that would make this possible. Outside of you guys approving this, this is not something that we would be able to consider at this time. So while I certainly appreciate it, my job is to take these next two years because I agree with the mayor. I think it will be highly successful. It's my job to work with the other council members to make sure that we find funding for this site in the future, which is my commitment to all of you if you had so approved this tonight.
And thank you, Councilman Carlson. Appreciate that. Any any comments or discussion from members of the city council? Are any questions for me about what we're proposing?
Mayor, I just want to say this is this is great. Thank you, everyone that was involved and really appreciate this. This is great.
Thank you, Councilman Stansberry. Appreciate that. I appreciate everybody collectively working together with us on this initiative. It's it's been it's been a joint effort and it's been something we've been wanting to accomplish for a long time. So our our goal and our hope is that we can have it open for the fall election, for the presidential election. Any other comments or questions? All right, if there's not, we can entertain a motion to move forward with the resolution.
Make a motion.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty.
Councilman Stansberry, thank you, sir, and Councilman Romero. Any any other comments or questions related to the resolution? Yeah, I'm sorry. I think there's a delay, so it's it's hard for me to see what's going on, I'm afraid. All right, Ms. Andrews.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Romero. Mr. Stansberry.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. William. Mr. Williams.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. App.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know who said it. Okay, Mr. Bogian.
You passed it, Gary.
Yes.
Unanimous approved.
See, see why we need a meeting. See why we need to go back to the council? Mayor.
Well. Yes, sir. Hopefully. Back to the council. So. We 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 looking forward to being right there with you. So no problem at all. All right, my my final comment about it, if anybody's wondering the the site that's being vetted for an early voting site, it's the it's the Lafayette Parish Library. I believe they call it the East Library on Lotteville Road. And I want to thank the library director, Teresa Elberson, and her team. They've been accommodating and we're looking forward to to working with them as they as they open their site, if provided that the Lafayette Parish Council and the City of Broussard councils agree to move ahead with this endeavor. So thank you all and thank you, Councilman Carlson. Right. Item six point two, resolution twenty twenty eleven, a resolution approving the application for recreational trails grant.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bolciano. Comment or questions?
I'm assuming that this recreational trails for Foster Park. Or.
Yeah, Clint, do you have the opportunity to to share what we're talking about?
Yes, sure. Can anybody see my screen here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, so the the trail that that we are referring to is starting from here just at the intersection of Railroad Street and Savoy Road. Coming off of the this parking lot, there'll be like a crosswalk here and there'll be an eight-foot sidewalk that that'll run along Railroad Street. Come down south around of Green Tea London and just south of the the boundary here. It'll it'll come back around and fly back into Foster Park to give access and some connectivity between Foster Park and the Youngsville Sports Complex. This is done through the the recreational trails grant through the state. That is an eighty-twenty match for up to a hundred thousand dollars.
And you said an eight-foot sidewalk, correct?
Yes.
Awesome.
All right, thank you, Clint. I did get. Yes, I'm from Stansberry.
Clint, I know this is obviously in the infancy stage, but the location of the crosswalk. Why was that area kind of designated as opposed to further down? Was there a reason for that?
Uh, well, I guess the the location of it like connecting the two parks.
No, where the crosswalk is right after that curve there. What was the the thinking behind that? I mean, I love this idea, by the way. It's great.
Yes, so that location is where the I can share my screen again. Is where the stubout is for the sidewalk that goes around the parking lot. Here. And so we already contacted Young's Industries and we got in a sidewalk easement along this property from them already, and that is to save a lot of costs for buying right away, which makes this project doable. But if if Young's is willing to give us a sidewalk easement all the way south here to put it further down here, they're just not a like really good spot to tie in. But
Okay.
We could do that if the council wanted to to do that.
Oh, no, I was just wondering why, but I see what you're saying now. I see the stubout on the map. So that does that make sense? I just want I was wondering why that area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other question?
And Clint was correct that I have approached Young Industries. They've graciously agreed to they would be donating a ten-foot easement for the construction of the eight-foot sidewalk trail. There, the only requirement I've discussed with them is that they've asked us to work with the farmer to assess the amount of the damage, the the loss of his crop, since we are opting to go to wind around the back of Green Tea London. So the benefit for the benefit for the public is that we're going to have this is will be connectivity between the rear Foster Park where the walking trail is in the back corner nearest Green Tea London and it'll go through the back of their property behind the fencing at Green Tea London, loop around to Railroad Street and provide a connection to Youngsville Sports Complex. So it'll be a continuation of the of the existing walking trail that's in Foster Park and then give us the connectivity to the Youngsville Sports Complex. Any other comments or questions?
With just for the record, Mayor, this, I mean, obviously, this this would kind of in conference, the project that we've already got that's waiting to see if we can get funding for for a sidewalk. Second, all the way to the complex. Is that not correct?
Yeah, well, we did not receive the we have a grant application in on that project, but we've it has not been funded. So this is another grant opportunity that grant opportunity that we're going after. This one's from a different funding source. This one's from the Department of Recreation, I believe. So it's not going to be as complicated in my says, in my opinion, as it is going through DOTD as we were trying to do before.
Wonderful. That's great. I'm glad we found this avenue to go with as well.
Yeah, I'm I'm really I'm really excited about it. I think it's going to provide great connectivity. There's a blind spot on Railroad Street in the curve there. If you're when you're going near Public Works, trying to get to the sports complex. So I think it'll be great, particularly as we start utilizing Foster Park more for different things. All right, any any other comments? All right, their motion.
We had a motion already, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. All right, Ms. Andrews, let's take it over.
Mr. Stansberry.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. App.
Yes.
Mr. Bogian.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Approved.
All right. Item six point three is resolution twenty twenty dash twelve. I had a conversation with George earlier. George, you want to maybe share with the the council your your thoughts of where we are with this topic?
I think in terms of giving a status, you know, I want to reassure the council that you know, us acquiring Foster Park and assuming that lease is going to go forward. Essentially, when we when the mayor had these discussions with Josh, they were both in agreement to move forward. So what I tried to do is I basically looked at what we had done five years ago on our previous attempt to be able to assume the lease. Again, if you recall back then, it was a little bit different. It was leaning towards a third of the property was going to go to Green Tea London for an expanded playground and two-thirds of Foster Park was going to come to us. So essentially, what I did is I I looked at the intergovernmental agreement and the previous resolution and the previous assumption of lease. And I just deleted the portions that referred to Green Tea London. I deleted the portions. There were some reservations for BYYA at that time and basically tried to package it in that same format. I did receive a call from the LCG lawyers who again assured that they're moving forward on this. It's going to be on their June agenda. Part of the problem that I ran into when I'm drafting it is that with the recent passage of the split between there's now a city council and a parish council. I do have to confess, I got a little caught up on the word on the worrying. And so, you know, now I've been assured that this is something that's going to be voted on by the you know, Josh Carlson, once again, has given us a hundred percent support. I know he's going to be lobbying his fellow parish council members. But I do appreciate the fact that it's it's only going to be voted on the parish council members, not the entirety of the Lafayette Consolidated Government Council. So the LCG attorney said that there were some little tweaks that they had to make. You know, one of which is, in their opinion, because it's an assumption of a lease, we actually don't have to have a cooperative endeavor agreement. So my response is, we just want to get it done and I'm here to assist in any way I can to get it done. So they're going to make some tweaks to the assumption of the lease. And they've assured me it's going to be at their that first week meeting in June. It will be up for introduction and that it will be up for final adoption. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I believe that the week of June. Project is is definitely moving forward. They've also assured me because the mayor and I expressed concern that, you know, we want Foster Park handled as at its as its own agenda item for parish council. Whatever happens with respect to Arsenal Park and Broussard, they're in a little bit different situation because I believe LCG owns that property. So I think mayor's concern, which I with I which I shared with the LCG attorneys is we want to be the only one on the on the agenda. We would ask that because Arsenal Park is a little more complicated, that that come, you know, at the July. Let us get through Foster Park because I think ours is is relatively straightforward. You know, it's something that, you know, I I know a lot of you as council members have lobbied for. You know, Tim Robashow is excited. I think it would be, you know, an excellent asset for our Youngsville Sports Complex, not only for able to use for the fields, but for as practice fields for the tournaments. We have this sidewalk going in that's going to provide great connectivity. So as far as I know, as of right now, everything's everything's a green light and you know, Josh Gilleri, thank you for his support. He's a hundred percent behind it. He's assured the mayor, our mayor, that he wants it done and he's going to get it done. And he recognizes that the the parish just doesn't have the funding to to fund these parks and and he welcomes that the City of Youngsville is willing to step up and assume that responsibility, just like we were willing to do it five years ago. And so I'm I'm confident that it's it's going to go through. We get these, you know, these little tweaks to the to the to the assumption of the lease. I I have every confidence that it's going to be successful and it will be passed.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty.
Councilman App. We leave it for discussion, but we not we not vote on this resolution. And the reason is, if you read the resolution in detail, it talks about authorizing the mayor to sign a cooperative endeavor agreement. We're actually going to have one. It's going to be an assumption. So what we'll do is we will come back at our council meeting. And I will have revised this resolution to be specific about exactly what the mayor is. And I will have revised this resolution to be specific about exactly what the mayor is going to sign. And I will give you and all the council members a copy of that tweaked version of the assumption of the lease, but we'll no longer have. The need to have a cooperative endeavor agreement. So that's why we're asking that that. I wanted to be able to discuss it with you and I appreciate the mayor allowing me to kind of, I didn't want y'all to get the wrong. Like something the earth is shattering or something's falling apart because it's not. It's just making sure that. We get the resolution in the proper format to explain exactly what our mayor is going to be authorized to sign.
Okay. Excuse me for being a little. I'm stoked. It's been a long time coming.
I agree.
Hey, I got a question.
Yes, sir, Councilman Williams.
Maybe it's not the proper time, but this this part. Is this part going to end up being a family park or do y'all plan on making ten thousand baseball fields or whatever? Any idea yet or is it too early? I'm asking the question.
Well, I think that's going to be up for our for our collective discussion and decision. It it's my opinion that we have it available for practice. But I think that I'm going to be very cautious about recommending expenditures there. Because I do think that the appeal that it has as a as a passive green space park. Is something that we need to maintain in our community. I think that the benefit for us will be that we'll be in control of the scheduling. Of of practice of events there. Gives us another sixteen acres that we can manage within our our Department of Recreation. But, you know, at at this time, it's not my recommendation that we're going to do anything. That we're going to that we're going to spend a lot of money there. I think the availability of having additional practice fields when you go out there today. I mean, there's a there's a pavilion. It's there's there's individuals that are walking and I think that we can enhance what's what's taking place there over time. But it's going to be at your correction and appropriation as a council member to to direct us. What to do and and how it needs to be managed. I think that Tim has. You know, an opinion and vision on it as as do each of you. So I think that's a discussion that we'll that we'll welcome and that that we'll have. On what's the best use for.
When ultimately, I I think at the time and place where we're at right now, we're just gives us the the opportunity to be able to go in there. And have utilization of it and. Spoke with council with Councilman Stansberry on it yesterday. And just being able, not saying that we will use city funds to it, it gives us the ability to. Be able to have a volunteer day for us to go out there and just. Start getting it that place up to 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 par. And I mean, I could share some pictures which I've got right now of. What that facilities looks like out there and honestly, I would, I don't let my kids go and utilize the facility. The the restrooms out there because it's deplorable. And I mean, it ultimately, this just gives us. The use of frucks to go out there and start putting our energies into something that is for the city of Youngsville. And we can put as much pride into that as what we do, the the recreational facility, in my opinion.
Any any other comments or concerns related to to move forward with it? Alright, well, if there's no other, there's no other comment on this, as George has indicated, it's going to be. There's no public comment that's come in. Mind the public, the telephone number three, four, six. Two, four, eight, seven, seven, nine, nine. In the meeting ID is eight, four, four, zero, two, nine, six, zero, four, seven, four. Tonight, we're just discussing this item. The council's not voting on it, but we welcome. Your the public participation on on the items here that follow. Any other comments about this? So as George has indicated, he's working with the legal team at LCG and. We'll have something back. For you to direct me to. Sign it if that's your desire, but if you'd like, I would welcome that we can start having the the discussion. Individually, or we can have it as an agenda item at a future meeting if you'd like about what the best use of it is. I know that Tim and his rec committee, it's something that they've discussed and I think that we we know welcome all input there as well. And with the with the our economic conditions and the way they are right now. It's like I said, it's not going to be my recommendation that we. That we spend any significant amount of money at this facility in the near term. Until we really learn more about what the economy is doing. I think that the LCG administration is doing. That I think they seem to be doing a great job of maintaining it, cutting the grass better than I've seen in the past. But we just feel like long term, it'll be a better asset for the citizens of Youngsville as a community park if we manage it ourselves. So, alright, well, George and and counsel, thank you all for the thank you all for the the feedback and we'll have more information on that as it comes up again.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to hear from Mr. Tim and Josh on what. What are their future? What do they see out there? And we can kind of just have a discussion. You know, Councilman Abchar mentioned it earlier that we had a chat and. I think we were on the same pages, you know, kind of, I think we're all on the same page, kind of keeping it with the same spirit of it is now. We have some extra practice space. We want, we want families to be able to go out there. We don't want to just turn it into. Like Councilman Williams said, ten thousand baseball fields. But I think us having that discussion now and even putting out a vision, we may not be able to get to that right away. It may be a five year plan, maybe a ten year plan. But we could start looking at what it's going to look like in the future and then we can start moving towards that.
I agree. Councilman Stansberry, thank you. Tim, your your mic's on if you have anything to add that you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all in the same going in the same direction and I think our red committee feels feels the same way. We just want this to be an asset, you know, to the sports complex and to the city of Youngsville. So that's what our vision is going to. Or our recommendations will be. But I think we feel the same way.
Yeah, no, I I just wanted to to thank Councilman Carlson as well. I know he's put a lot of time and energy. I don't know if he's still on. I don't see him in there, but I just wanted to compliment him and and tell him thanks for for the work that that he's put in. I know it's been a big discussion between him and I on it as well. So thank you, Councilman Carlson, if you still own here.
Yeah, he's here.
Thank you, Councilman Abchar, and I'll just say that, you know, this is something that I first took office. I had lunch with the mayor. And started talking about priorities and a few of the council members as well, and this is something that came up continually. And I've been working on it ever since. I'll I'll be honest, it has moved forward slower than what I expected it to, but I'm I'm glad to see that we're. Starting to get some movement forward and looks like we'll have a vote on our end. I, you know, whatever I can do to help, obviously, I'm here. You've got my full support in lobbying my council members for this. I think a majority of them are in support of this. And like I said, whatever I can do to further this along and make sure this happens, I I'm here really to serve you guys.
Thank you and welcome to the speed of government.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, Mrs. Stansberry, did you have anything else on the topic?
No, I I was going to ask if if Mr. Tim had some ideas, you know, once this thing goes forward. That, you know, we could do like Councilman Abchar was talking about. We talked about putting together like a beautification, a cleanup day. You know, what are some things that we can get done? I'd even like to bring Angie into the conversation. There may be some sponsorship. I know we have, you know, some concerns about funding going forward, but just trying to think outside the box, seeing if there's some other sponsorship ideas. To be able to get our goal a little bit quicker because people want it, people want to give back and I mean, and even in this environment.
Ken, I had I had an idea I had mentioned to the mayor, I guess, about a few weeks ago, was that we could do. Some sort of community outreach event where we got the community involved with some sort of, obviously, not necessarily. Monetary, more or less, just, you know, people want to be involved in helping. Beautify the community and, you know, your event with, you know, young, keeping Youngsville beautiful after Mardi Gras. I think should be an example to show that people love to be involved in part of those projects. So we can kind of use something similar to that. Going forward with with Foster Park. That'd be kind of a a great idea to keep in mind.
Great idea.
Great.
I think we come together and we we incorporate some of the feedback from the rec committee. We'll get. Tim and and his his team, the council members, and I think it's we obviously needing. We we should include the public with it. Obviously, we're doing it for their benefit. I mean, we've had a. It's been a couple of years that we had a, yeah, I think we need to just keep an open mind about it and put all things on the table. I mean, a. As an example, a dog park back there would take up a small amount of space, perhaps not a large investment to to Mrs. Stansberry's point, perhaps. Not a large investment for our sponsor if we start looking at it as under the umbrella of the Youngsville Sports Complex. So. I'm excited about the opportunity. And I think, you know, we 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 had a public charade. In our planning phase for the Youngsville Sports Complex. And that was a great experience. It was facilitated and we heard from members of our community about. What was lacking and what did they really want to have there? And I think we need to probably approach this similarly. Because it's a very unique opportunity to have sixteen acres in the heart of our city come available. And it's something that I think I think getting this asset for us is a is a smart decision now, but. I think we'll we'll come up with the right answer with the right public input and collaboration with each other. Any other feedback? Alright.
Mayor, hold on. Do you want to mention the potential work with the developer adjacent to that property and potentially having that? Another access to. I know when I went out there with you and Councilman Abchar, we were kind of just looking at some brief ideas and. I mean, it 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 felt amazing of that future, you know, just being able to picture that.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Pam and Clint are both very familiar with Fairfax, the development that's abutting. The rear of that property there. We're on the first phase right now. The conversations I've had with. That. Development group was that on the second phase of that development, we could look at having some connectivity from the neighborhood. Into the rear Foster Park. Unfortunately, that's not part of this current phase that we're seeing right now, but they're certainly open minded to to incorporate it as a second phase. I'm really excited about the, not to go back to the to the. To the sidewalk issue, but I mean, an eight foot sidewalk connecting at minimum. I mean, we're we're having the the paperwork's being drafted now for the acquisition of that sidewalk easement. There is a small section that will need obtained from the Lafayette Parish School System, but it's currently behind the fence line of. Green Tea Linden's playground, so it's not an area that they're using today. But so I'm optimistic that we'll have success crossing through the rear of their property there to meet up. So I I'm excited about it. I think that this is a grant that's much more easily navigable. And we recently just saw a new idea get awarded. A project from the same. Recreation trails fund from their application. So I I'm optimistic about it. I think that that's just. You know, one component of what could be a great kind of master planned. Event back there. Public Works has done a great job of reinvesting back with the street signs, poles. And also sidewalk improvements in the heart of our community from First to Fifth Streets, Church Street to Green Tea. And I think this is gives us another opportunity to. Incorporate new development as Fairfax has its second phase to to tie in and to have a pedestrian entrance as well and. I don't know, I think I'd I'd honestly like to look at perhaps connectivity to even. Air facts. If that's possible. I don't know that it is, but I mean Fairfax abuts it on. The Ghiat side. I don't know that there is, you know, but but maybe there is, you know, to at least have a some sort of connect, not vehicular connectivity. But pedestrian connectivity if they want, you know, but I think that that's something that we can look at there as well because we're continuing to see. A lot of development along Ghiat as evidenced by the developments you approved earlier today, so.
That would be nice. Can I know, I know you said the neighborhood that's building, being built across some Sugar Ridge, that the one street, once these. Subdivisions start developing sidewalks, it'll be nice that residents will be able to travel to the park via sidewalk, you know, safely. Versus having a rile on the roadways, especially with. The. I'm sorry, the subdivision right before Almanaster is connected now to Highland Ridge. So once all these subdivisions kind of connect together. There'll be a much more safer path for residents to kind of navigate the city and and utilize the the city's, you know, parks and wrecks to their ability.
Pam, I know you're familiar with that layout. I mean, if you have anything, you and I've met about it several times.
Yeah, um, they will connect and and answer to earlier when they had originally Fairfax. It was going to be several and it's now called Fair Haven and I think it's just to differentiate the product that's going to be inside of the development. But it is planned pretty much for all of that property from Ghiat to Daytona. To have residential but with commercial, as much commercial as they can along Schumacher and actually along Daytona now. Originally, it would be houses all the way to the sports complex they're looking at in that particular area. So all of that's going to have sidewalks and then within it with regards to the second phase, when it's going to connect. It's going to connect right around their detention pond. They have a detention pond that's going to be at the edge of face one and face two. So it will actually, and that detention pond's going to have like a walking track around it. So it's going to connect to that and then all of the internal sidewalks. To get to the sidewalk that Clint talked about earlier. So there will be connectivity. Both along Schumacher as it gets built out and and within it coming from Fairfax into Fair Haven all the way to Daytona. So it's just a matter of time, but as fast as things are going, it's not going to be a long amount of time. I think the big thing is to just keep keep the sidewalks, you know, front and center in all of our developments and. You know, there's no, I think there's no longer a sidewalk to nowhere when it comes to Youngsville.
Ms. Garjay, quick question about phase two. Is there an opportunity for. A road access to the park?
That's something we can sit down with the developer and talk about since it's not been planning. You know, I think that would be if that's something that you guys would like to have. They'd have to modify what they currently have as far as for a plan. But, you know, anything's possible.
Hey, I was thinking kind of like a drawed park. You know, you'll have the the side parking. And I I don't know if there's any opportunity to go around the back of that first phase. Is there any kind of room back there? Now for a little parking spot? Well, we'll talk offline after this and see, see what the opportunities are.
Any other comments before we move on about this? It's it's a great opportunity, so. Appreciate appreciate the conversation and excited to bring it back before you. So anything else? Alright, well, let's move on. The next item, the next item on the agenda. Is six point four is resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, a resolution approved to approve giving a two month water and sewer credit. To commercial businesses within the city of Youngsville that have been adversely affected. By the COVID nineteen crisis and to suspend all late fees and disconnects for all utility accounts for a period of two months. Just to, just to set it up, Councilman Stansberry had approached me about. Wanting to know what our options were to to do more for our business community. You know, it's what everyone's well documented, the impact that COVID nineteen's having on everybody. And our business community has been no exception to that. We've seen a, you know, shutdown where businesses have not been able to operate. Tomorrow starts one more step back to businesses being able to open. But really, all the, all businesses that are open are being asked to limit their capacity to twenty five percent, so. The impact to our businesses, the sales tax and so forth kind of really remain to be seen. We know the impact that the or the benefit that these businesses do for our. The sales tax that that they can contribute to infrastructure improvements, public safety, recreational opportunities that benefit the entire community. So we are limited to what we can do. Because, you know. We are, we are limited to what we can do, but this is something that we felt that we could do. So with that, I'd like. So with that, I'd like to, you know, have Councilman Stansberry say a few words about it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Obviously, the businesses, I mean, we've tried so hard. We've eliminated commercial permitting fees to get more businesses in Youngsville. We've worked with them. Ms. Grange has worked hard to help streamline the process on, on them coming into our, our, our city. And obviously, we don't want something like this to, to shut them down. I know there will be some casualties. However, you know, talking to the mayor, I talked to Greg Gotro from Lito. We just felt like, hey, we got to do something. These businesses have invested their livelihoods. Sometimes these are dreams of theirs to open up a business. And might not be a whole lot, but we wanted to just, after talking to the mayor, this seemed like the best option to just give a good gesture back to the community, our business community and say, you know, we care about you. We hope you can make it through it. And we're right here with you.
I appreciate that, Councilman Stansberry. Any, any other comments? The floor is open for council members. Public, again, if you're just, if you're just joining us, we welcome your input as well. The number's three, four, six, two, four, eight, seven, seven, nine, nine. And the meeting ID is eight, four, four, zero, two, nine, six, zero, four, seven, four.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Williams.
What is the process of elimination for those who is affected in the city? And not affected because you got some that closed down altogether, some that's two or three days and some that's, that's never closed. So what is the process of elimination that we're going to determine who was quote unquote affected?
That's, that's a great question and that's something that collectively at Asphia, your, your your contribution to the discussion, what our consideration is at this point right now is that you're right, not everybody has been affected. We've, we did receive our March retail sales numbers in and we saw some sectors of our, some of our sales, some of our top sales tax producers, their numbers increased. So we know that certain businesses that have not been forced to close, but yet they've been asked to modify their operation. What we've seen so far is that they've had increased sales. So the, the the discussion on this was to opt in rather than opt out. And the benefit of that is you, we're calling on our business owners that have a commercial account within the city. They would apply and they would have to attest that their business sales are that their sales has been, have been impacted by the COVID-19 crisis. I think we know the types of businesses that have been doing really well. And I think that, you know, you don't have to drive too far around to realize who is not doing that well. But to answer your question about the process, what I envision and it's open direction if, if, if you want to move forward with this resolution, what I envision is that we would have a opt-in application for it. What this resolution proposes is that you would have to opt in by July 31st. And if you attest that your business has been affected by COVID-19, you would qualify for the equivalent credit of your March and April utility bill. So it's an amount that's already been determined because we, the March and April bills have already been mailed out and they've already been paid in most cases. So we know what the maximum exposure is. And they would be issued a credit onto their account for, to use in future months. But I'm willing to make it, I'm willing to, my intention is that I have to sign off on those personally. Simone and I have had discussions about how to do it. I think that we can, I have some ideas about putting more, making a gravity form on our website and making the business owner fill out some basic information about their account. We have access to know what their usage is. I mean, from maybe the same month previously. But I think, I think what I, when I started really thinking this through and going through different versions of this resolution, I think that by opting in, we're, we're asking our business owners to be responsible and only really apply for it if they have been adversely affected by it. And I think that the trust that we're, that we're providing them is similar type of trust that we're providing guidance to our business owners to open, open shop safely, you know, do these different type of initiatives. So I suggest we're empowering them to attest to us that their business has been impacted. And, you know, I, I don't, honestly, I don't expect to get into too much of a tedious process for the review. Because, you know, I, I ran what our commercial accounts were, you know, I mean, as fast as we're growing, we still don't have, you know, and we don't, we, it's not, it's not a very overwhelming amount. And we looked at the maximum exposure of what it could be, should every business owner apply? And it's something that we feel comfortable that we could absorb, even though I don't think it'll be a fraction of that. I may be, I may be wrong.
And, and my next question is, is probably for George, but I mean, is, is is the proposing, proposing for us to, city giving away the city revenue for the, for the state of the sale of utilities? Is that, is that legal for us to do that?
Well, Gary, that's a very good question. And obviously, when we're putting this together, I, we had those discussions with the mayor and with Simone and the entire team. And, you know, if you recall, you know, sewer fees are essentially a fee. So just as before, when we went to commercial businesses and said, look, we want your business, we're willing to waive these fees, bring you here to, to generate more tax revenue for the city of Youngsville. It's essentially the same thing here. You're not, they've, as the mayor said, they've already paid the bills for the two months. We're, we're affording in this credit to give the, you know, recognize that, you know, a lot of businesses are going to struggle to reopen, you know, unfortunately, some businesses, we've all driven around, some businesses have already closed because they had to pay their rent the entire time. They didn't get those benefits. So I think it's, it's a show of support. It's a recognition that when, when everything is blowing and going in Youngsville, the, their sales taxes are what allow us to improve recreation, buy more police cars, improve our roads. And it's a recognition. So it's not, it's not as though by giving them the credit, we're not, we're not writing checks out of city funds to each individual business owner and say, go spend the money however you want to spend it. We're simply giving them a credit and essentially waiving a fee for a service that we provide. And I think we're perfectly within our rights all to be able to do that.
Okay, one, 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 one more question. And maybe I'm going to blow this one out of proportion. I know we always say shop Youngsville first for the residents of the city of Youngsville. And I know we have a lot that just the husband works and they all got laid off for the city of Youngsville. But what are we going to do? If the residents say, hey, they doing it for the businesses, I have no job, what about us? That's my concern because ultimately, George, you're right. We've already given a lot of businesses a big fee because we wait, we waived their commercial fee. But what are we going to do for the citizens of Youngsville who put us in office? That's my last question.
Well, you know, and my response, obviously I defer to the mayor on that issue. But, but, you know, I, I just, I guess I view businesses and residents differently. You know, in terms of the residents and it wasn't really discussed, although it's contained in the, the resident. Again, we stepped up and say, for this two month period, we're going to waive the late fees. For the two month period, we're going to waive the disconnects. You know, in terms of, of, I think it's really apples and oranges because I think as the mayor said, you can look at, at the list of businesses and you can get an estimate of what those fees were. If you in turn open this up to, and I don't know what the latest count is on, on how many residents we actually have in the city of Youngsville or how many residential accounts, that's a much greater number. And I, and I don't, you know, in these uncertain times, you know, and I'll defer to Ben and the mayor on that issue, but that's a much huger number. And I think I, I, I think that was too much to jump in on that end of the pool. You know, I hope that the citizens of Youngsville know that we are here for them. You know, I have friends in the oil field laid off, so I'm very sympathetic to that. But my hope is that we are going to get through this crisis and, you know, the employment benefits have been extended. They actually increased the amount of, that people were receiving, you know, on a weekly basis for unemployment. My hope, you know, I saw the other day, oil prices are going back up. So I hope that in turn means, you know, we're going to get through this together. It's, it's a learning curve and it's a process. But I hope that the, the citizens of Youngsville know that, that the city supports them and we're doing everything in our power. I mean, as the mayor said, you know, we do have limited things that we can do, you know, under the law. And I'm perfectly comfortable with doing this for businesses. And I think we've made some concessions. Well.
George, George, I agree with what you're saying. And Gary, I know where you're coming from. But I think that the businesses of Youngsville have put forth not only, you know, the time and effort, but their own personal funds to give into Youngsville, you know, for their personal businesses, but for, when you, when we talk about residential, I think the federal government and the state is doing a fantastic job of of supplying them with enough funds to get by. And I don't think that we as the city should enable citizens to basically give, give up and have no hope and faith in the system. We can't, we can't sit back and hand out freebies the entire time that this is going on just in lieu because they said so. Otherwise, we would just pretty much bankrupt the city. I, I mean, I, I have empathy towards them just like myself. I mean, I'm a business owner and I work for my money, but we can't, we can't sit back as a city entity and just say, hey, we're going to give you a freebie for two months. I mean, that just isn't worth that way.
To who you're talking about? To the citizens?
Yeah, I mean, I, I got, I mean, I feel empathy for everybody in there, but I mean, that they're in, in the same instance, we could, we could discuss that all day long, but the, the same individuals that you're talking about wanting to give a free month of water to are the same people that are making more money on unemployment than I'm making in a week working a hundred hours, you know?
That could be, that could be residents and people, you know, but hey, listen, like you say, it's for another day. I, I, I'm finished. I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
But Councilman Williams, that was discussed between me and the mayor. And I'd shared a story that I had heard about someone that has their own business, can't work. They didn't get PPP. They got very little on the economic, the EIDL. And they couldn't apply for unemployment. So there were, there just seemed to be a couple of those stories around where if you're a business owner, you didn't get a few things and you couldn't get unemployment. But then obviously, if you're, if you've been let go from a job, then those unemployment benefits have been enhanced until July. So.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And, and I mean, again, like I told Linda, I said, I wasn't going to say that, but I mean, we, we can, we can whip this horse all day long. But I think we've been fair to businesses to come here and without us shopping there, they, they would be in a pickle now. Okay, now I'm done. Go ahead. That's just my opinion.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-13.
Motion by Councilman Stansberry and a second by Councilman Romero. Any further comments or discussion? We've had no request for public comment on this item. Councilman Williams?
Sure.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were motioning me to, to ask a question.
I'm kicking my cat.
Mayor, I just wanted to say one thing.
Yes, sir.
I, I know we had the conversation about this, I think a couple of days ago after you and Councilman Stansberry talked. Oh, you know, I, I feel after talking to you, you're, you're putting yourself in a difficult position. And I think it's great of you to do this. I trust that you're going to make, you know, I have all the trust in you that you're going to make the right decision, deciding with your people who, what businesses should actually be approved for this and which ones unfortunately can't. So I think, you know, I know you're going to reach out to us if you have questions, but I'm excited that we'll hopefully move forward with this.
Well, thank you. And if it is approved, Councilman Romero, I mean, I, I commit to stay engaged, you know, I'll communicate what our process is and, 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 you know, what the, what the results of it are. But again, it would be an opt-in and just to be, just to be clear for the, for everyone's benefit that has not perhaps read the resolution. What the proposal is, of course, as it's been stated, is to give it to a credit equivalent to the two month expense for March and April to businesses that apply by July 31st and attest to city government that they have been adversely impacted by COVID-19. But for all accounts, Councilman Williams, what you're prescribing in this resolution is that we continue waiving late fees through July. And we've also been very flexible with, with our disconnects. Generally, we have a, we have paused disconnects. So ultimately, for all accounts, what, what has happened is we've paused disconnects and we've deferred payment. So that way, you know, we know that there's been residents that have hurt with being unemployed, reduction of hours, unemployed or underemployed. So we, it was our position that through that deferral process and making sure that our account holders aren't accruing late fees, that that in itself was a benefit that they're receiving. And I am at a point where, you know, I've been doing that administratively, but I'm asking you collectively as the council now to, to prescribe it for me by your vote. So that way, you know, I can't, I don't want to continue doing that forever. I feel like we're at a point where I need feedback on how to manage, you know, the system, but your thoughts are well taken. I mean, we are, we are all in it together. I mean, that's how it works is that the residents are shopping at the businesses and it's the residents that are paying the tax dollars through the businesses that are coming to fund city government, parish government, the school system, so forth. So it certainly does take all of us, you know, but I appreciate your comments. So there was a motion and a second. There's been no public comment entered. Call the roll, please.
Abshar?
Yes.
Mr. Bogiano?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you, council. Agenda item 6.5, it's Resolution 2020-14, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a master lease purchase agreement and schedules there too, with respect to the acquisition, purchase, financing and leasing of certain equipment, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents requiring connection therewith and providing for other matters in connection therewith. This is part two of the fire truck purchase that was before you had a previous meeting. You directed me to go ahead and get the cost for the financing and that's what you have before you today. What I'm proposing is that we move forward with a 10 year, 10 year agreement with one annual payment at the interest rate of 3.25%.
Can, maybe Sally or some, or Ben can give me an explanation on why we had to do this in two meetings and it wasn't done in one. I just wanted some clarification on that and why, why the, why the world with the resolution in tonight's meeting is different from last, last month's meeting?
From my understanding from Jason Akers, the first resolution was saying, yes, we would like to proceed with this, that the city will help with this and will be one part of it. And the second one is authorizing the form and everything else, the lease itself. If you can see on the, on your attachments, it has the whole thing, the form that Jason provided. It's part of the body. That way you don't have to go to the bonding commission, otherwise you might have had to go to the bonding commission because it's more or less a lease purchase and not, you're not going to bond outs or anything, find out the funds. But if you'd like a better explanation, I can get Jason to call you in the morning or tonight.
I was just curious. I know when we, when I can't explain whenever we had a motion a while back to, I think it was to bond out on some property, we did it one resolution. We didn't do two, so making sure we, I guess clarification on why.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a fair question. I mean, we have approved other things. We did, Sally and I posed that question to Jason Akers and he reminded us that the first resolution had language in it that said, like dot, dot, dot containing terms and conditions as may be approved by the city council at a, by subsequent resolution. So it was really the language in the first resolution that was adopted that required us to bring you a different. So it was really the language in the first resolution that was adopted that required us to bring you a different one. So if we were, if we were starting the process now, I probably, I would ask that question and say, can we do it with one? Can we do it with one council action?
Yeah.
But it wasn't, I didn't pose that question until after it was passed, the the first copy was passed, and that's what's directing us back here today.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious for, I guess, for future, uh, any future purchases we have coming forward next few years, if this is how it's going to be.
It 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 really depends on how are you going to purchase it, whether it's going to be with cash out of your account situation you have already or whether it's lease purchase. So whether you're born from bank or whether you're bonding money out, that's that's the difference in how it has to be approved, so.
Chief, uh, Blair, is this the correct verbiage that we're going to need for uh for Pierce? Or like, I guess, to get to Danny, is this the correct uh verbiage we're going to need?
Yes, absolutely. Basically, uh, the credit app should be sent in or being sent in. Uh, I know I completed the fire department side and sent it to uh Ben. Uh, and then it'll be turned over to Michelle. From there, uh, it would just be communication between Michelle and the mayor or Michelle and Ben. To finalize everything that's being approved tonight.
Okay, awesome.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash fourteen.
Second.
Romero, second by Councilman Williams. Any further discussion? Okay, there's been no public comment and there's no further discussion from the council. Ms. Andrews, please call the roll.
Mr. Bogiano.
Do I need to abstain from this vote, Mr. Akers?
George.
Um, I I would, um, I would recommend that that you abstain, um, since it it has to do with um the purchase of of fire equipment.
Yeah, that's what I figured, just wanted to double check before I voted, so I'll abstain.
Okay, Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Dabchar. Mr. Dabchar.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. Ordinances for introduction, seven point one, ordinance four forty dash twenty twenty. An ordinance of the city of Youngsville, Louisiana, amending the official map of the city of Youngsville and the corporate limits of the city of Youngsville, Louisiana. As per the legal description of the city of Youngsville Parish of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, as prepared by Kevin Domain, the LS. Right, a motion by Mr. Dabchar.
Second.
Second by uh Mr. Bogiano. Further con- any comment or questions related to this? All right, we've had no public comment either. Uh, Ms. Andrews.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Dabchar.
Yes.
Mr. Bogiano.
Yes.
Approved.
Right, then item seven point two is annexation ordinance four four one dash twenty twenty. An ordinance of the city of Youngsville, Louisiana, amending the official map of the city of Youngsville. Providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the city of Youngsville, Louisiana. Owned by the Longlinay and Youngs Industries Incorporated, located in Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, in part of the southeast. Quarter, section nineteen, township eleven, south, range five east, Lafayette Parish, Louisiana. Shown on that map titled map showing property of Longlinay and Youngs Industries Incorporated to be annexed into the city of Youngsville. Prepared by Kevin D. Domain, professional land surveyor. This is a, this is, this is seventy acres. This is at the corner of Shemin Agriob and Guyot Road, seventy one, seventy two point four eight acres. All right, thank you, Councilman Dabchar. Second, Councilman Romero, thank you. Any council discussion? Okay, there's been no public comment. Um, Ms. Andrews.
Mr. Stansberry.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Dabchar.
Yes.
Mr. Bogiano.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Approved.
All right, thank you. This this is going to be a, this is going to be a great development, I have a feeling. We've been having some preliminary conversations with the the design team on it and it's um. I don't know, how how would you describe it, Pam? It's something like I've never seen before, I guess, the design characteristics.
It's it's something uh more like what you would see in Florida and some of those other areas. It's going to be a um a a a really cool product compared, not not to say that we don't have some good ones in here. I don't want to say that, but it's going to be a little bit different. Um, everything's going to be way more uh curved. And uh, they've definitely um done detention in other areas and have thought about. Um, drainage with regards to lots behind each other, so um the developer has done a great job of making sure that. They're taking care of things, things that we normally have to bring to people's attention. They they took care of just because they're used to doing work in other places. This is only their second development in Louisiana. But um if the plans come in looking like the, that they knocking it out of the park.
All right, thank you, Pam.
Mayor, I I did want to say something and I meant to say it earlier. You um, to give a special thank you to um Kevin Domain, um, you know, been the city attorney for a lot of years. Uh, and a lot of different people uh on annexations. I think Sally would agree with me that um Kevin has just done an excellent job. I mean, he surveys it. Uh, he stays on top of the tax assessor's office, the registrar voters. Um, you know, thanks to Sally who continues to push both Kevin and I to make sure we get this stuff in in a timely manner. Um, but I I want to commend him. I mean, he really has done an excellent job. The the previous ordinance about um truly getting a map that will be. Office that's going to truly show um our municipal city limits, knowing full well they're constantly uh enlarging. Um, because everybody wants to move here, which means more subdivisions, more tax revenues. Um, but I do want to give a special thanks to um to Kevin Domain and Domain Jabo. They've they've done our sewer stuff for years. Um, but Kevin has really stepped up on the annexations, uh, and I think it's caught the attention uh uh of other. Terms of how much of job he's done for us.
Thank you, George. Item seven point three is ordinance number three twenty eight point two twenty twenty. An ordinance of the city of Youngsville, Louisiana, amending ordinance number three twenty eight dot one twenty fourteen. To amend chapter one fifty, stormwater management and drainage, article two, culverts, section one fifty dash twenty two, design parameters.
Show move.
Thank you, Councilman Williams.
Okay.
Second by Councilman Bogiano. Any council comment or discussion on this item? All right, and there's no public comment on it, so we'll go ahead and move.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Dabchar.
Yes.
Mr. Bogiano.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Stansberry.
Yes.
Approved.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, um, for Robishow, you want to give an update to uh the council members and the public perhaps?
Yes, um, we're formulating, trying to formulate all our, get all our plans, all our guidelines for to. Hopefully start back in practice next week, you know, in a safe, safe manner, so we're putting all that together. Um, making a lot of different changes to the schedule, um, practice schedule. Um, staggering times, you know, for people coming in and out. Uh, we're able to use the more of the soccer fields because uh both soccer groups are not going to, they cannot finish their spring sessions. Since it's gotten so close to the summer session, so that's going to help us a lot in social distancing to get. Especially all the younger teams out um on the soccer field area. So we're putting, working on all that to, so we can get, we have all the coaches calling all the parents starting yesterday just to make sure. Uh, what all their rosters are going to look like since there's been some downtime. Um, so hopefully, um, we're going to let you weigh in on it. Um, I mean, Jamie and Matt, you know, are coaches out here, so we spoke to them also at times, so. Um, I think we'll have everything ready tomorrow to look at and to start finalizing and to let people know what's exactly going to take place.
Thank you. We we uh are excited about, excited about getting back after it. Uh, but we are very diligent by doing it in a safe manner for for all of our stakeholders. And I appreciate the the time that you're putting in uh to make sure that we're able to uh achieve that deliverable. Any comments or questions for Tim before we move on?
No, I've just got a a a comment. I mean, uh. It was everybody's uh uh anxiety about who was going to be out there, who wasn't, who was still going to play, who wasn't. Um, in the youth fourteen age group, I've talked to all three coaches and all three of us have thirteen, uh, twelve kids. I think we have each had one drop off and uh I know with my T-ball team, I've got all fourteen that said they were going to be out there playing, so. Um, I I think the attrition's going to be very low, and I mean, I'm only fourteen, so the hundred and fourteen we got out there, but. Uh, I don't think it's going to be all that much. Uh, Tim, have you guys heard from anybody else?
Well, in, I mean, in total, in total, since since it took place, you know, which is almost two months. Uh, almost mid, mid-May, we've just had a total of eighty-six transactions, you know, from uh. But some are not necessarily just from the COVID virus or the fear of it. They've, you know, they either um. Um, had injuries or this has been a lot of different reasons, but it's just been, it's been a total of eighty-six since for two months, for a two-month period.
It's out of fifteen hundred kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
All right, and to be honest, and to to be honest, we're we're prepared to to do whatever we need to do to the rosters. Uh, there's some areas that might not be playing just because, you know, we had already got underway and practiced the whole week. Some areas haven't even put their teams together, uh, so we have some areas that are actually calling us to register right now because they're hearing. We're going to, we're going to pick back up with our league. So there's, you know, there's, where there's a will, there's a way, you know, we want, we want our children to get back out there and. Play, you know, a full season, but we just want to make sure that we do it, you know, in a safe manner.
All right, dan- thank you, uh, Tim. Uh, Councilman Carlson, thanks for staying through the meeting for us. Uh, anything you'd like to share with the council? Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to give an update on uh Savoy or for you, Mr. Williams, Savoir Road. But uh I got an update from our roads and bridges department. Let's see, about. Uh, a week and a half ago that said that um Savoy Road is included in a. What we're calling a two thousand nineteen rural asphalt street overlay and rehabilitation project. There's ten uh roads uh that were in the rural or unincorporated areas of the parish that were approved to be uh reconstructed. And uh, a week and a half ago, when they sent it, uh, the construction on that project is set to begin in four to six weeks. Um, so we should see in, within the next month, construction begin on those projects. They couldn't give me a timeline on um uh. Which roads would be first, but they're expecting all ten of those roads uh to be completed within six to eight months. So my hope is that by the end of the year, uh, or at the very latest, um, beginning of twenty twenty-one. We would see uh that road completely uh redone. And um, so just want to give you guys an update on that. I know a few of you have been asking, and so we should start to see some progress on those roads. Uh, in the next month.
Good job, sir.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Councilman Carlson. Appreciate, appreciate the update. Uh, Chief Boudreaux, anything for the group or for the public?
There we go. Uh, we will be announcing in the next day or so that we have solved the century defense burglary. Uh, the arrest is already made, but we're not ready to release the name yet. Uh, there's a few more things to work on, uh, and uh, other than that, everything has been calm and hopefully remains that way.
Ricky, how many of the guns that we're able to recover?
We have recovered at least uh ten of the fifty-three that were stolen.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate, appreciate the update. Ms. Chumpine, anything you want to share from uh, I got your, got your mic on.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'd just like to acknowledge, uh, you know, we're always in in city hall proud of our staff. You know, citywide, Public Works, Sports Complex, and the girls in the front, that man in the front desk. I do want to compliment them all. I want to compliment Public Works because they've been out there for the last two months, taking care of their their jobs. Uh, Sports Complex has kept the facility immaculate so that they, we can get up and running. Uh, when it's time, so thank you all for that, and I especially want to thank our girls up front. Because even though they've worked from home, they have kept the city running. And just this week, I got a very good compliment from someone that said that if they had not known they were not inside city hall. They wouldn't have realized it because they've never missed a beat on their daily work. So it wa- it, nothing goes without a challenge. However, they have done a very good job and I just want to acknowledge them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Simone. I couldn't agree with you more. I I gave you very little time to stand up a emergency procedure for operating. City government remotely, but uh everybody on a team.
If anyone knows.
I don't even, I don't even think it was that much time.
But it's it's okay. I mean, they have really come forward with the challenge and, and you know, I know Sally gets on the phone uh weekly with the clerks association. I get on the phone with the CAO's Association, and uh I know our CAO's Association was amazed. That we were able to do that because if uh some of you don't remember where we came from five or six years ago without any technology. And now we've been able to operate the city uh remotely, so uh they've done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, and for the public benefit, uh, I didn't really intend to make this announcement because I'd like to believe that city hall never closed. But uh, city hall will be staffed again starting on Monday, uh, so if any, if there's anyone that um. That needs something, I mean, of course, we're going to follow all the rules and all the guidelines, so um, I would encourage you to still. Interface with city government how you have been for the past two months. Um, because I'm, uh, to Simone's point, I'm really proud of some of the, some of the things that we thought would be obstacles. We've been able to stand up and um. I think have a more efficient operation for the public movement forward, so my expectation is all those components will will only continue and just continue. Just become stronger, so thank you, thank you for acknowledging uh all the staff there. Um, Terry.
I just want to mention the ongoing uh operations as far as for drainage, uh, on the South Cooley from eighty-nine to Griffin Road. Uh, getting a lot of good compliments, um, a lot of people noticing us out there. In addition to sidewalk projects that we were trying to uh fix as many sidewalks that are deficient in the, in the city. Uh, my hat's off to my guys, they they really, like Simone said, from, from the beginning of this COVID nineteen, uh. Have continued work operations and and really a good group of people, yeah, for you, Public Works, probably, for sure.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Uh, Ben, I'm sorry, I meant to call on you uh earlier. I think uh Ben Ben has the very uh, the most responsible task of preparing our budget. Our fiscal year ends June thirtieth and our new fiscal year starts July first, so um, I don't know if if we have a date yet for the budget meeting. But um, Ben, anything to add?
Uh, the last date we discussed was the twenty-fifth of June. Sally wanted me to reach out. I haven't heard back from Burton, but we have set it up for the twenty-fifth. Um, she said there may be some kind of a conflict there, I'm not sure, but I'll I'll try to call him again in the morning. And talk to him and see if we can maybe change it to possibly the Tuesday or something. But I think he had, I think he already had meetings lined up with Scott for sure on the Wednesday, so um. And yes, the budget is being worked on and uh many other things, so. For me, like I've said before, working from home is, is probably not as bad as it is for most of you. Because if you have to greet the public every day or get into meetings, the planning and development, that sort of stuff, that kind of suffers. But for me, it's, it's giving me all the freedom I have to try to get things done, so it's, it's really worked out well for me.
Well, thank you, and uh, I'm very impressed at how efficient you've uh, you've, you've, you've stepped it up. And uh, you're also in the midst of budgeting, the administration's rolling out a new module for our AP component. For our accounts payable component where uh invoicing will be electronically scanned and entered into the. Municipal management system as a permanent record, as opposed to having to chase down. Payables and old files at Public Works and all these other various locations, so that that training is ongoing uh right now, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, with our first training and we're, we're starting to use it. Um, so by July first, we really should all be using it, and that way next year we should. So by July first, we really should all be using it. And that way, next year, we should have our full fiscal year being done the same way.
All right. Well, thank, thank you, sir. Pam or Clint, anything on y'all's end y'all want to share? Pam?
I'm sure. And well, with this rain, I don't know if y'all can hear, but we're getting a lot. So let's talk. So with regards to drainage, just for everyone's knowledge and in case Councilman Carlson hears anything. Today, L C G actually bid a project that had Cooley La Salle in it. The portion that we're already cleaning out. So unbeknownst to us, we've never received any plans with regards to it whatsoever. And it bid at two o'clock today, so it'll, I, I contacted L C G when I found out only because contractors said we were taking work away from them because they were thinking that they were going to be cleaning the channel. But, you know, here we are always on top of it, Terry on top of it. Ten steps earlier, but what I did not want is because I know sometimes some of these are, are lump sum, what I didn't want was L C G to pay a contractor to do what we've already done. So I emphasized again, and maybe Councilman Carlson can help us with before these things go to bid, if they are within the city limits, we've, we've repeatedly asked for plans. So we can look at them and, and make sure that we haven't already done the work or make sure. So the survey that they have won't even match what's there because our, our guys are digging and, and going. So I just, I wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. I did ask. You know, the next one they wanted to have, I think, on their agenda for this time next year is the La Salle Cooley South. By that time, it may need to be done again, but the survey was just taken a couple of weeks ago. So if we clean anything from ninety-two to Marto Road, that's supposed to be on their list to clean next year. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I do not have it, and I do believe also next year would be the, what they're calling Bayou Park Purdue Upper. I, I asked again for Bayou Park Purdue lower reach because we know that all they did was do to, you know, pick up some trash. I said, that's really where we need something because not an excavator was ever on that. And again, that'll complement the detention pond that we have there. So I did ask for that. So what I'm hoping is the money that they put in the areas that we already got to, that maybe they could move some of that money to Bayou Park Purdue, which is beyond the equipment that we have and truly a project that you put a contractor on. So I just want to put that out there because I think it's very important. And the timing just happened to be that it was today. Don't know how the bids came out and they weren't, it wasn't virtual like what we did. And so I couldn't make any comments nor could there be anything. So I'm sure that that's going to come up. So just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. Also, we finished the emergency portion. The whole project's an emergency, but the worst portion on Cedar Grove between addresses two oh one and two oh three, that was completed last week. The homeowners were very happy. I am, have a couple of more details. I just got all of the quantities in for the price of that to be able to also have the quantities for the rest of it. So I'll be sending you something mayor for Monday so that you have both with the quantities of the project so that we can see which portion we can, we can finish, finish next. Some parts of it, you know, based on their most recent from the geotech, there's a good portion we'll be able to mill and overlay. But there are some portions that won't take anything near like what we have, but will take something a little bit more substantial so that we can reinforce what's underneath asphalt. And that's our, we are still moving along on our two detention pond projects. I think we're waiting, I think now that the owners have been notified of our intent to to expropriate if we, if we aren't able to get a sale. So we're moving in that direction. So we, we started with regards that we need to do some survey on the one on the Riviera, but hopefully in the next thirty days, a lot of that will be done and we'll be able to give you so, give you a set of preliminary plans that you can see on that. And then on the next roundabout, I'll be, I'll be glad when we can actually sit down and show you. But we're probably eighty-five percent complete. We don't want to get to a hundred percent. We want to be able to show it to you. We want to be able to get some input from those businesses with regards to how we have the sequence of construction. So we can't wait till we have that, that opportunity to be able to get with everybody on that roundabout to try to fulfill your two roundabouts in two years.
Right. Well, thank you, Pam. I will tell you that never did I imagine that we would be run off of a Cooley project, but I think that we would, we would welcome that. So so Josh, it's, it's, it's shared with, that, that feedback is shared with you with a lot of love because when Terry informed me that our operator, there was a contractor that was out, I guess, preparing his bid, sharpening his pencil for his bid and went out, went out there and started questioning why we were doing the work he was, he was bidding on. And you know, so we will gladly redirect our efforts with, without a problem in any time that there's something that's you know, in, in the, in the scope, well, it's all in the scope of power, of the parish, but if it's, if there's an area that's under their purview that they have on their radar, we, we will gladly go dig somewhere else. So I, I welcome the opportunity to be chased off of a Cooley project. We got, we got, we got plenty of other stuff to do, so that's no problem at all. And we, we had a, Josh and I had a lighthearted moment at the, at the library when we were discussing early voting site. And I remember sharing with the group, I said, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to chalk up and do this for a few years. I said, but the problem is, once you start doing it, people, people, now people think it's our responsibility to do it by drainage. You know, I said, we started doing drainage under a similar gesture and now everybody thinks it was ours. So I prefaced, I said, if the council goes along with the early voting, I don't want there to be the similar, you know, expectation forever. So, but we're hap, we're happy to help and happy to work in partnership and communication with you and Mayor President Guillory's been outstanding. So Pam, thank you. Thank you for that update. Who do I have left? Before I call on Chief Blair, I do want to share, I did receive a great compliment from a resident this week. My family wants to send you this email to recognize and express gratitude to the Youngsville Fire Department. This afternoon, I was working from home. My kitchen quickly became consumed with smoke and like I've ever seen before. Myself and my wife rushed in panic to realize something was burning badly. We thought for sure our home was on fire. We quickly called nine one one. And within about three minutes, a total of three fire trucks along with other smaller trucks were at my house. Just prior to them arriving, we realized that the bad smoke was caused by popcorn left in the microwave, kids the, left in the microwave cooking for over fifteen minutes apparently by the kids by accident. Although this was an accident and seemingly trivial, nonetheless, it created panic. Blair and his crew completely took charge, quickly deployed special fans to move air out of the house and get all the special, get all the smoke out. Somewhat embarrassed that all this action and so many firemen came over something so simple. Every single fireman took it serious and even just as important, took the time to talk to us and calm us down. This was first-class service and complete dedication to their job. The fact that within three minutes, all this equipment was deployed was amazing. Even my, even though my family felt bad that all these men put on all the gear and moved out all this equipment, Blair and his crew continued to reiterate that we made the right choice to call. And that they would rather see this reaction by homeowners than to wait and have a house burn. I thought you should be aware of the event. I previously shared that with the chief and asked that he share it with his team. So thank you, chief, and a great segue to turn it over to you.
You know, ju- just getting that type of message from you, it goes a long way coming from a resident. And then you didn't share your, your kind words back to that resident, but I want to thank you on behalf of the Youngsville Fire Department for your kind words back to this family. You know, we, we're out here doing a job and we tell them, you know, a lot of times with these private alarms, when they go off, it's typically a faulty detector. But we tell them, we rather go for that minor issue than a major issue, you know. Losing, losing a home is not a good thing and I, I can share that with everybody, you know. So thank you also, sir, for the kind words. Also want to thank you and the council, you know, for moving forward with purchasing this new apparatus. It's long overdue and we're going to continue making the city proud of what we do. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Revad. Appreciate your leadership and those at your department. So, all right. Mayor Protem, any, anything for the, for the public or for your colleagues?
Well, sir, ready to play ball.
All right. The Councilman Bolgiano.
Forward to seeing y'all next month. Just looking with the suit and hear Gary call. Stay safe and we'll see y'all next month.
Looking forward, looking forward to that as well. Councilman Romero?
Yeah, just one quick thing. Pam brought up the Cedar Grove, Cedar Hills project. I wanted to compliment city engineers, Terry and his group and Glenn Leje and their project group because if you came out and saw that massive hole, which I know the mayor did, it was ridiculous. What was found in it and how deep it was, but you drive by it now and there's no water holding for the most part. Actually, after this, I'm going to go drive out there and see what kind of water because it's draining off great and it used to hold a ton of water. So I know everybody's excited about that. So thanks, thanks, man.
Thank you, Councilman Romero. I jokingly said, next time I ask why is there water holding on a road, y'all just, they'll put me back in my truck and redirect. Because that was, that was a pretty big massive hole there. You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
All right, let's see. Councilman Stansberry?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, look, I, I'm looking forward to a meeting in person. This Zoom stuff is pretty cool, but there seems to be a lag every time I'm on this thing. So it's like a, like a couple second delay. So I'm getting everything after the fact, but I look forward to seeing everybody in June. Y'all stay safe.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Williams?
We had a good turnout for anyhow. We had to be so far away for the National Day of Prayer. We had a good turnout at the Sports Complex. And anything else, just time to go back to church Sunday. Looking forward to seeing y'all in person next month. That's it. God bless.
Thank you, thank you, Derek. Have a couple just final thoughts. Pam hit it on the nail with the weather outside. Hurricane season does start June first. Like to take the opportunity to encourage everyone to to come up with a plan and try to prepare themselves in the event that there is a hurricane hit us. Terry has instilled to me long ago that, you know, we do drainage three sixty-five and preparations sixty-five. So I appreciate that. Pam is right. We, we have made significant segue on the two regional detention ponds that everyone is on this meeting has committed to. And, you know, we, we were in a good spot for the negotiation and in moving ahead with the property simultaneous with Pam's design work. So I appreciate that. Want to congratulate again all the graduates, not just at Southside High, but all the Lafayette Parish schools. Ascension is an awesome school. We're so happy to have them in our community and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge them and all their contributions to, to our city. You know, the schools are what make, part of what make Youngsville such an awesome community. And I'm reminded about that all the time by seeing the great things that, that the seniors and all, all the kids are doing in our community. The charter school is making tremendous progress and so we'll, we'll have another campus there to, to, to share as much, to have equal pride over as well. Census, it's not too late to fill out the census if you haven't already. So much is at stake. We only afford the opportunity to get counted, or the, the US only affords us the opportunity to get officially counted once every decade. While they come up with census estimates, this is really our one shot to, to get it right for the next decade. Just from the development that you've approved tonight and the annexations that you approved tonight. That number is just going to continue on the upward trajectory. So it's that important that we get our twenty twenty as of April first number, right? Because as soon as that number's put in ink and shared with us, well, we will by far have already exceeded that number by the time we get that probably in the first quarter of next year. So let's make sure we're all counted. And lastly, I just want to share that you know, my, we touched on it earlier with, with what we're doing for our businesses, but I know, I, I know I, all of us feel this way. Our thoughts and prayers are for everyone that's impacted right now. From, you know, whether it was COVID nineteen or the, or the impact of COVID nineteen on our economy. Or those that have been impacted by the oil field. It's a challenging time to prepare a budget. But, you know, no doubt about it, we'll, we will, you know, be a stronger community after this and but, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't take the time to just acknowledge them on behalf of all of us because, you know, I'm so fortunate to, to have the responsibility that I have and, you know, to still be getting a paycheck as your mayor. So I don't take that responsibility lightly. I'm honored to serve all of you and, you know, thanks for the great dialogue. Lastly, I just want to apologize if anybody is still watching us. I know we had some delay and some technology issues. I haven't decided who to blame for that, so I guess I'll just take the blame myself. You know, I'm going to blame it on the weather. There you go. Thank you. But anyway, if you did try to join us and it was a little staticky or delayed or you caught us, any of us with our mouth open or in any other awkward position. You're always welcome to come to our council meetings in person, starting in June. So thank you all for your patience and that's it. So unless the council has anything else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Bolgiano and Stansberry, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Y'all have a great evening.
I'm still.